It's not me, it's Lauren that's taking so long.
Is the first thing on the agenda? If there's anyone on Zoom? Do we have to have it going before I say that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, does anyone on Zoom would like to say anything if they can unmute themselves at speed?
Jessica, can you hear us? Can you put your thumbs up if you hear us?
I can, it's quiet, but I can hear you.
So he can't hear you.
Yes.
All right, we are getting a curriculum and instruction technology report on the slide. That's all person who's taking care of me too, or?
No problem. Sorry, there's just more people joining. Okay, so from curriculum and instruction standpoint, we have been making great strides. I had a meeting with Bosse's to discuss our behavior matrix. So we started our draft for our behavior matrix. So that is on point to be completed by the end of June. We also have contracted with Bosse's to use our model school days and our school improvement days to, and we're starting April 6th actually, so we have three full days in the elementary school for an instructional model with iReady to ensure that we're meeting that minute time in order to make that year and a third progress with iReady and to jumpstart us into the new year. And then we have five half days planned at EBIIS for planning sessions with each grade level span. So that is all set and ready and will be happening. We have many different professional development offerings going on at the same time to allow for, to align with restorative justice, to align with our blended learning, to align with differentiation. So a lot of professional developments happening, being offered from a wide range of vendors and also from our own teachers. So thank you for the teachers who have volunteered to provide some of those professional developments. I know that we're doing the Sora app, which is the public library app, and getting all of the kids, all of our students enrolled on the Sora app so they can access the public library at home right from their iPads, which we think is going to be a great resource. We struggled with the Epic app previously because it was only available during school hours. So this time they'll have a wide variety of reading selections from the public library. So we're really happy to get that kicked off, exploring databases, differentiation, book study going on. We have NearPod and Castle Learning, all sorts of different professional developments being offered this spring. We're, I, in the tech side of curriculum and instruction, the draft 2022-2025 technology plan is complete. We are meeting with our instructional technology team committee at the end of April, and we have a May date and a June date. I have some parents and staff members who are going to be involved with that and that we have an entire list of things to consider there for topics for discussion. In regards to our rostering system for Rick One, we no longer are able to roster. So for our tools like Castle Learning and iReady, what previously used to happen was the Hudson Valley Rick, where School Tools is hosted, used to roster those items for us, and they're no longer providing that service. So many other school districts have a single sign-on option for our students. So we're looking at ClassLink as a single sign-on, where they would be able to log onto their device and see all of the tools that they access. So for example, many different tools come with logins at this point. So for example, their textbooks, all of that is now a single sign-on, and ClassLink offers a lot of protection and multi-factor authentication and things that align with our cybersecurity as well. So we're looking at ClassLink for that single sign-on device. So that is pretty much what's going on curriculum and tech-wise. And I think I'll have a little bit more information come the next meeting regarding our summer school programming. Okay, no problem. Any questions?
Any board members have any questions? That all sounds great.
Sorry, I was going fast, I know. We'll, we'll provide demos of ClassLink once we get it up and going.
Just to note that ClassLink will, will be purchasing through Bosse's, so that will be addable. In addition, we are purchasing another service that was brought through Bosse's, NISP, which is the standard that we have to comply from a security perspective. They're offering a coaster that will help us meet those standards and going through a bunch of checklists, things that we would not be able to do on our own. So we have purchased that coaster and will be ongoing support. There's a software program and actually go through each of your items, where you have the ability that you may have information that could be compromised. You get them a risk rating, and then at the end you have an overall risk rating of what your school district is in terms of protecting your information. Coming from banking world, very similar, we're about 10 years behind that. The banking world is way ahead and they do that same type of thing. And then, you know, you're looking at those things to make sure humidity and high-risk they have and making sure that you protect any PII that you have. So Bosse's, the actual coaster starts next year, but they allowed us to begin this year. They could have jumpedstart us, so we can some of that work over the summer a bit more.
It's called Siometric, and that'll also be in our, in the technology plan. We'll discuss once we're ready.
Big picture items, just to get everybody back into, away from into now to cyber attacks and things like that. Really great things in regards to professional development, because I can repeat here. Specifically looking at differentiation, I know that was a discussion that we had as a board. We had met with the instructional leaders and the principals individually, and the common theme was we need to have all students engaged. And looking at differentiation, working closely with Lauren and Bosse's, we're going to be focusing on differentiation or differentiating. So what does that mean? That means we have so many diverse learners within our classrooms that it's difficult for them to be engaged all the time. It's difficult for teachers to plan for that because you have so many different expectancies and learning levels. But we're going to focus on differentiation for PD for the summer and throughout the next year, talking about some people that are really keen in differentiation. For Jeffrey Baker, who's in E&amp;L, she's working with us and doing the study group. She's working closely with Lauren on developing ideas for next year in regards to that study group. We're talking about instructional coach coming and working with us on differentiation. So it's going to be one of our main focuses.
Seven days, do they have a chunk this summer at the end of the school year? There's a couple of days?
At the end of the school year, there's one day.
One day, okay.
That we have our staff that if they choose to participate in professional development after school or outside of school day on all things that we authorize, they can have that one day if they have, you know, a training throughout the year. So we use that each year.
So it's ours, right?
It's ours, yeah. The other part, a component that Lauren's going to speak more about is the summer school opportunities for our students, and that is enrichment for our E&amp;L students, which we've done here for a number of years here with Mr. Baker. We have our extended year program, which is the other cot that we're also going to continue. But we've opened it up for other opportunities for staff to work with students in an enrichment type of atmosphere. I know at the K4 level, K3 level, there is an enrichment program for mathematics, correct?
Correct.
We are looking for one for the intermediate school as well. And we are close to finalizing with Mr. Pascal our summer school, which is actually a traditional summer school for those students that need to catch up on work they may have missed in seventh and eighth grade, specifically, specifically in the four core classes, that if they're behind for whatever reason or failing, that's we will offer them an opportunity to catch up. So we continue talking about that. Thank you, Lauren.
No problem.
Thank you. I will try to remind myself and everybody else to speak as loudly as is comfortable without, yeah. Okay, let's see. Business administrators, business administrators report.
Today, my report is on the proposed budget, since this is the meeting prior to the adoption of the budget. Generally, by this time, we have final numbers. The state still hasn't finalized their budget, so the state eight number is not a final number. That's still an estimate at this point. Once we get to that point, we'll, we'll have them size the numbers in terms of getting to that before, hopefully before we get to the final adoption of the budget.
Sorry.
That's okay. This is our Thursday bracket, it's getting other things.
There it is.
I think you've got a little bit on your plate.
There we go.
Okay, as always, I'd like to set the groundwork in terms of where we are in terms of the current year, our adopted budget this year was $24,798 and with a tax levy of $60.2 million. That's the starting point where we work off of each year is the, is the current year, and then we go from there. So the proposed budget that we're looking at is a proposed budget of $25,314,000, which is a 1% budget to budget increase. And this is a unique budget here in the sense that the budget to budget increase is relatively low comparative to the revenue side of it because we did have a decrease in the projected state aid. So that's what some of these things go back into that. So I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the key areas. Now, it's important to note that the number at the top is the, is the number of the decrease in the overall budget, which gets you to that 1%. If you were to add up these individual categories, they don't flip to that number because there are other smaller categories that I helped put on here that are also, may have nominal changes as well. So for us, a big, big one is salaries, of course, contractual obligations. But in this budget, we do have the addition of a certified health teacher, additional special education teacher, an additional section of pre-K, and additional funding for curriculum planning and PD over the summer. So that was added to really help with our curriculum mapping and to help out somebody differentiation, training that we want, want to do over the summer. The debt service and inter fund, this is a decrease. And we've talked about this before, some of our current debt we have paid down. Last year, we had $300,000 in the budget for bus purchases, which is not in here this year. This year is a proposition, a separate proposition of purchase of buses. So that is taken out, that has an effect on this. And the school lunch fund will have $150,000. So I've projected $150,000 trying to chip away of that deficit. In addition, at the end of this year, if we do have money that are able to be allocated for reserves, that is an option as well, that we can additionally put to pay down on our school lunch fund as well.
Something percent. Go back to that, rarely do you ever see a $25 million business or company on a year-to-year annual increase of 1%. Specifically with just Bosse's contracts and outstanding contracts, we may have labor or even outside vendor contracts. So 1% is a really good job. It has to do a lot to do with Robert using funds from grants to fund a lot of the things we have, a lot of budgeting where Robert looks at and says, what can we fund in the current year so that next year it doesn't hurt the budget? So kudos to Robert because a 1% budget on a $25 million operation is pretty phenomenal. We don't see that much though.
We go to the next employee benefits. This is another bigger item for us, and as you could see, health insurance is $170,000. And that is coupled with, on average, it's about, it was about a 3% increase. And the current employees is a little higher than the Medicare, because they get the Medicare subsidy on that. So it is that, that, but as you know, you know, from the district, the health insurance plan that we have is through Dutchess County Consortium, so the pricing is very good. So in a marketplace, you know, only having an increase of this amount is, is pretty good. And this also takes into consideration, we may have employees last year that were on a single plan, that are on a family plan, or vice versa, and also takes into consideration buyouts and things for that. Special education, out of district placements continue to rise dramatically for us in terms of cost. And so you see, this is a $201,000 increase from our current year budget, which was already in the $300,000 range. So we will continue to look at that. I do always have to anticipate additional placements throughout the year. So we have to look at that, and now at a higher cost, we, for example, we, we do have a couple students that are in residence programs, which adds enormous cost to our bottom line in terms of that. So we'll continue to monitor that and look at options to make sure that we have them in, one, the best program for them, and, and the best fit in terms of that. We continuously move the students around to do that.
And those are not out of district, because we have current students and we're saying that they're placed into the out of districts for their education purposes. Most of these, if not all of them, are students that are coming to the districts, either from other school districts or first year pre-K.
Bosse's, this is a decrease of $126,000. And really, it's not because of the Bosse service, we're having less or the Bosse services were a reduction in cost. It is mainly driven by the Bosse's debt was paid off the last, last year, with the last year of the Bosse's capital project. Once we paid that off, that was an increase of about $200,000. So if you look at this, we probably want about $100,000 give or take in our Bosse services overall, because when you take that debt out of the picture, it makes it look like it's an overall reduction.
And kudos to the board on a good decision to pay it out of funds that we had in the budget, rather than have to bond it over 20 years, because we would have that paid over 20 years. We put the bullet for two, three years, and it's the final payment, so that's why we're seeing that. We paid it by transportation. This is a decrease as well, and this is where the bus funding comes into play really more so. This is where the $300,000 was, and the fuel increases, we put fuel increases in there because we don't know what fuel costs are going to be. We're also looking at additional, possibly additional private contractors for out of district runs. I have the budget for that as well. But if you take the $300,000 out, you know, you're looking at about a $220,000 increase if you take out the factor of the $300,000 loss, so that's what that.
And of course, the problem with getting bus or business increases not peculiar to me or something.
No, no. You know, there, you can see that in any news drive-by, any private contractor. They have, you know, help wanted signs, they're paying, you know, enormous amounts, and that doesn't necessarily mean that you get more staff. You know, I know there's another local district that advertised a much higher rate of pay. They got one applicant, and that one applicant wasn't able to pass the CPO. So more money doesn't necessarily equate to the ability to have more drivers. So what does the tax cap look like? So the maximum allowable tax cap for us is 4.9. That's because of the capital conclusions, our debt payments are able to be taken off of that, so that gets us on a 4.9. The proposed tax cap, which this budget is based on, is 4.74%, which brings us to a levy of 6.985. So we would be under the tax cap, allowable tax cap.
That's important highlight. So we could have exceeded the tax cap, we could have stayed exactly at the tax cap. But in discussion with the finance committee, with the board, we felt that we can still run our operations, knowing that we lost on state aid, and that's why that number decreases, and we can still run our operations at just below the tax cap allowable.
And people will still be able to get their star absolutely painted, which is not small.
Absolutely.
So if you look at the budget revenue breakdown, based on this budget number, you see the amount at the bottom of 16985, that is the levy. We're still supplementing the budget with fund balance of 1.9 million, which is the amount that we've done for the past couple of years was 2.1. We back that off a little, 1.9 to get a bit more conservative. These other estimates of revenues are clearly estimates at this point. You know, the ones below the 5.9, those are relatively small in comparison with $25 million budget. So an estimate is not a big deal. The first number is, is important, you know, because if that number comes in different, we will obviously have to make some adjustments to the budget, to the expense side of things to make, make this work in terms of that. And based on what we are hearing, though, there is an expect, is not an expectation that that will be too far off the mark. It will probably be close to that, if not more. So who knows, we may have to look at this from either side of it. So as I indicated before, the budget to budget increase is 1%, the levy is 4.74. That is purely driven based on the revenue side of this because the tax levy is really taking, covering the remainder of that state aid that we are not getting projected to get this year, because we did have a reduction at state aid. So that's really the difference in, in those two numbers. Generally, you would see them much closer together, it'll be a much less of a spread.
And I mean, why, why didn't we get the reduction on state aid?
Well, because a couple of things, yep. Our building capital, capital projects are starting to be paid down, so we're getting less aid on that. In addition, in the past couple of years, we did not purchase buses through any borrowing, so those can't be deducted if you take cash. And the reason we didn't do that is because last year we did a study to look at a privatization of our buses, so we held off purchasing any buses. But by doing that, it kind of pushes us back a bit because I wasn't able to plan it, so it was last year because the proposition was too late by the time we decided what we were going to do. So you're missing out that, that year or two of funding, borrowing for buses when cash was dealt.
Remember also, in their whack-a-dude formula system, New York State, we are the second most impoverished school district in free and reduced lunch in Dutchess County behind North of Kinston. We know that our families are struggling, that our community is struggling. New York State considers us one of the wealthiest school districts in New York State. In New York State, not in Dutchess County, in New York State. So their formula is completely off. We advocated, we lobbied, because there are such few school districts that this affects, they really don't listen. I've been up to the state, I've been in front of the council, I've been in front with the superintendent's council, trying to, to work in the Ways and Means Committee. It's just not going to change. It's just the old formula that they're not going to change based upon where the votes are coming from. And the more and more, as you'll see, that Rob will show in one of the last slides, is even though the average taxpayer homeowner is paying less taxes now compared to five years, it's because of Silo Ridge and some of the other properties that are coming on board, the state starts building that into that we're a wealthier school district, so state starts to balance all that.
In their perverse system.
Perverse is better than whack-a-dude.
Yeah. It's, they go by quote-unquote land runs, doesn't matter that you have a whole bunch of properties that go pay any taxes, you're still considered wealthy. But that's like having, you know, too many dollars in the bank account that you can't touch for 200 years and say, oh, you don't need to borrow anything, you got lots in the bank account. You know, it's just insane, but there it is.
So the estimated tax rate, so if you look at that slide, the current tax rate is $10.97 per thousand. Keep in mind, these numbers that I'm giving you are based on last year's tax roll. I don't even have tentative tax roll yet, that doesn't come out until early May, and the final tax roll is not set until after the budget. So this 1149 could change, and as we have seen in previous years, it does change dramatically because of the new assessed properties that are going on the books from Silo Ridge. That has generally brought that number down dramatically, what our estimate is. I'm cautious to even venture a guess of what that estimate is because I don't want to put a number out there that comes out to be, you know, much higher than what we had previously said. So this is what it is based on that last year's tax roll.
We anticipated it being lower.
A lower increase, you mean the tax rate, yes.
That's tax rate.
Because the one, we don't set the actual tax rate until after the final assessment is done, so we have time to change, that's right.
That is correct. So if you look at the estimated tax calculation for homeowner, I do 100, 200, 300, just to kind of show you. It's 52 cents per thousand, and you look at these numbers here in terms of where you're, where you're at. So this would be an annual increase, if you add a $200,000 assessed value home, it's a $104 increase annually. And of course, that number could change, you know, if it'd be lower with assessed value.
So this, this budget with this levy is at this point, an average of about $104 annually on a $200,000 home. We see that lower eventually in the next couple of months, maybe month and a half, we'll find out more, but that's based upon last year's numbers, so we have to use last year's.
So if you go to the next property tax history, this is the slide that Mr. Casslinia was referencing. If you look back to 2016, 17, you look at the average home front annual taxes, 2,493 for a homeowner. And if you go to the line above that is the tax rate, you see that actually slowly come down. And as you go from 18 to 19, 19 to 20, sorry, you see the tremendous jump, and that's really where the Silo Ridge jump happened, and that dropped that. And then you see another jump from the following year, another year. So if you see that progression, and if you drive by, you see that they're continuing to build the, you know, the undeveloped land, now becoming finished properties, that adds to the assessed value. So we will continue to look at that. So if you look at this, though, as an average homeowner over the years, even though they may have had levy increases, their average tax bill has decreased quite significantly, actually. If you look at seeing a $104 increase overall from year to year, if you look at it over the past year, they've had, you know, four to $500 decrease from that period, so.
Deservingly so.
So what will be on the ballot when we go to vote in that? Obviously, the approval of the budget, once we finalize that and that is adopted by the board, the approval of the transportation proposition, as I indicated, this year this will be financed. So if one mini school budget, which will be ADA accessibility for our students that have disabilities, two minivans or light vehicles, minivans are difficult to get now, so it'll be a light vehicle, and one utility ground vehicle, that will be to maintain the fields that we just redid last year. So that's $170,000, so that will be a separate proposition on the, on the budget vote. And then the election of two board members for the two seats, that will be open for two, three-year terms. The dates, Monday, May 9th is the annual public budget hearing, and then third, Tuesday, the May 17th is the budget vote here in the school. And next week, next, next, board meeting will be the adoption of the budget, and we may have more definitive numbers at that point. So we'll do a one final presentation and then before adoption, definitely.
Then actually, if I can, before I ask any questions, I keep meaning to ask, is the Bosse's, isn't Bosse's budget vote always on a Tuesday? Is that April 18th meeting, that would be April 19th?
No, Bosse's goes to next week.
So that's end of the 26th, okay.
Yes.
I didn't see that on the, okay.
Yes.
All right, so we have another board meeting set. What a job. Okay. Okay, any board, any board members have any questions?
My question.
Sure.
Sort of tangential, how many, how many coasters do we have with the Bosse's across?
It's a lot, but we have, we have hundreds.
Yeah.
We have, we do over $2 million worth of business with, with coasters and Bosse's, and that's not only through. And that's not only through the Dutchess County BoSies, we have cross contracts with the Mid Hudson Rick. We have some computer services through BoSies throughout the state, so hundreds.
PD kids, there's.
Yeah, everything from special education placement, CTEC, our computer, all of our computer servers go through BoSies. We have a facilities coaster that we utilize for air quality testing and our fire alarm testing and inspections. Yeah, there's almost everything that you can think of. We did, we've been purchased it through BoSies, we did.
Yeah, I mean, I knew all the student services, we have some technical technical, I didn't think of hundreds of.
Little.
I didn't think in the hundreds that we had that many. Is there a list that's easily available that you can send us?
I, I have.
It would be a portion of the.
Yeah, it, I have the, the, what I sent to BoSies, it's their service, service request, which is where I put the budgetary numbers in there, what we do from year to year, I can send you that.
Would that have, do we just have codes, or would it have?
It has a code and it has what the research is called, and it has last year's budget and what we are anticipating utilized in this.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Everybody want that?
Oh.
Hey. Send it to everybody. We should all have our same analysis.
But yeah, it should go to everybody, but.
Yes, that's.
Even if they make a face of it, but.
It's always just a little trash.
So, so just in terms of student coasters, student related, are we, is there an increase or a decrease that we have this year? I was about to say.
Usually it's about the same. Yeah, obviously, every year their costs go up like everywhere, and it really is depending. I know the one that did go up, we got a bit of a decrease, is right now we are estimating that more students will be attending CTEC. So there is an increase in that one. The special education ones are about the same, because, you know, we do add new students each year, but we have some graduates. So, you know, depending on the services that we offer, so.
Let's make it clear, Robert is actually twinning that he should get credit for this. For years, we reserve a number of seats for our students, high school students, for the CTEC program.
And CTEC stands for?
Career and Technical Instruction.
That's what they take like.
Coming welding.
Welding, engineering, CTEC.
Which I hope to see the offerings increase.
The trades, as we know, there, the need for people in the trades is tremendous. So in discussion with Robert and with guidance of high school, we're actually getting a little bit about the seats, Robert asked us if we would want to give the opportunity for more students, which we said yes, of course. So thankfully, Robert said, tell me how many seats you need, and we'll send our students there, so that's a, that's a positive for. Yeah, I need to, with BoSies, really, I'm thinking it's getting, coming to CTEC and upbringing. The superintendent was hired with that specifically in mind because of his experience. Yeah, that's a great topic, so much. And our high school principal coming on board July first, is also from the CTEC program at Elster BoSies. So I see trades being a way to go for many more students. Yeah, he's not just, you know, how to build a academy, which is, I respect it tremendously. But there's all sorts of technology, and you guys know this, right? He's working with corporations, bringing in people and pretty training programs, yeah, and it's, yeah, so it's not just the traditional thing. It's a lot more, uh, I love stuff, obviously, technology, technological.
We want our students to get a good education, and we want them to be able to make a living and have a career. And that's not going to be sitting behind a desk for everybody, thank God, because try to find a plumber, you can't.
Yeah, so even though I stumbled over my words, I may have said, I may have disrespected the traditional trades that we have. Not at all, that was not intended. So, Robert, that was one question that I wanted.
Right.
So, special ed students, where, where do they go? And I guess I mean, what, I think I meant like students who don't come here. I mean, what do you hold on, I'm not sure what I meant.
I'm not sure whether that involves personal information too, so.
Yeah, no, that's why I didn't mean to ask, yeah. Something about them that you had, uh, something, out of district placements.
Yes.
So we have seen, as we all know, that we don't, don't have the resources to provide their educational needs here. And usually those are students that may have some type of IEP that we can't meet with our resources, because they're so small. So if we try BoSies and any of the BoSies program, whether they be at BoSies or actually at school districts in Dutchess County or in other counties, as a coaster with BoSies. And then some of our more needy students, students that have some needs that may be even residential, or for the blind or the deaf, or something that's more severe that BoSies can't even accommodate, we do send out to other school districts. And though some of them are in Westchester, some of them are in Dutchess County, some of them are Elster County, some of them are BoSies. Does that include children that are in overnight program or? Residential.
Good chance.
Yep.
So some of those could not even be properly built, right? They just move to districts, so we don't have some trucks.
They are in that big place.
Yeah. So why did you use the five point nine number for student per state aid?
Uh, because that is the initial executive budget that was proposed by the governor. And now it's in, the legislator has presented their budget, and they're at the negotiation point. And normally something in between that is where they come up with, but that's the initial estimate that's moving into the April. And that's why we use that as a start.
Which you probably said, except it was the governor's estimate.
I hope I said that correctly.
Um, yeah, I think the houses aren't, so, which leads to the next question. What if we revisit the tacky days and the budget is not agreed to on time? So like basically, the budget's brought up for a vote, and we don't really know the numbers.
Right, so we would have to do an estimate of that. And realizing that the revenue may come in short of that, and having, making sure that we look at expenses, that we may have expenses that we may need to trim throughout the year, which is possible. We did that during COVID, we cut back on a certain number of expense items, and we can look at that if that was, I don't anticipate that being the case. There is discussion that there are quotes at this point.
I'm just on the board during those fun days, you do the best you can, that's all you can do.
You know, we, we also, you know, just keep in mind, we use one point nine million in, in one balance. You could increase the one balance to two one, more if you needed to, we have the benefit of having that at this point, so you could do that. You could look at some of your BoSies services, if you, you know, things that we're doing that are extra, we could trim back those. We could look at, you know, a number of things, you know, but we would get there fixed on.
Financially, we're in a very good position right now, and that's not, doesn't mean that came from the first few years I was here. We trimmed a lot, and so now we're feeling the benefits of that trimming, because now, you know, as, as cost is still rising, because we cut some of the costs earlier, we're able to absorb some.
And I'm, and I'm also, and I know the past couple of years, I'm a believer in reserve accounts. So we have been funding our reserve accounts that we can at the end of each budget year with additional funds that we have. So our reserve accounts are funded to the, you know, where we can. So some of these expenses, say for example, tax serve, you know, we have been funding that in anticipation of any large payouts that we may have. That's already in the reserve. If we have increases in the retirement accounts, because inflation rate go way up, we've been funding those reserve accounts, so it wouldn't be a one-time hardship to the budget. We would be able to pull from reserves for that. So that's part of that expense management, in terms of that looking at, you know, you may not need it this year, but you're funding those reserves account for future years, so you're not so dependent on that current year budget.
Which is what helps avoid twenty percent plus tax hike that occurred shortly before I moved into Armenia instead of Denver. So that's what we try to do. Nobody wants to have to explain why that's happening.
So, if you didn't keep in track and knows how many more questions we have. I think that's seven now. Well, I have one more, and just like you. What's a utility ground vehicle?
So if you, it's like a three-wheel type of vehicle designed specifically to maintain the infield of our softball fields. Currently, you use a John Deere tractor, but it's much heavier, and it actually sinks in the field, and it's really not the right vehicle. It's not as nimble either, the utility vehicles are able to, you know, do like zero-turn radius and will be able to maintain them. You know, my, as we've been through this, you know, I'm a believer also in, if you repair something, you have to maintain it properly and have the right equipment. So we just spent the money to redo both of those fields. And my, my, you know, my plan would be is to have the equipment to properly maintain it. So we're not out there in the spring spending three days picking, you know, a bunch of weeds out of there. If we maintain it properly with the right vehicle, we'll have a good field to use for the students for many years.
So that vehicle will be used to?
So it's, you drag the field, you're able to, you know, till it, there's different attachments that we could put on the back, it turns the dirt, so you're not getting weed buildup. And rakes it out, takes the stones off, you know, picks it better, a much better plant surface.
Thanks.
Yeah, don't mean to get political, but let's hope that once they're done with this budget, there's more money that goes to schools and communities than any that we've built, state. What I fear is that we're going to find. Sorry.
Okay. We have a pretty good presentation. Ready? My report, I'm going to turn over to our wonderful, short-term here, Nurse, who's going to be with us, but not in the same role. We, again, it's probably the most proud moment of my educational career. And it's right around the corner, I believe, within the next month and a week or two. We're going to be opening our school-based health clinic. And I thank the board and Robert for all their hard work and supporting this. But we wouldn't be here without the person who brought this to us. So he's here to talk a little bit tonight, Nurse Charlie, thank you so much for everything you've done. This is going to be huge for our students and our children, our community, and you should take very, you know, a lot of pride, because you're the one who brought this to us.
That's very kind of Commissioner Castelloni. And what a pleasure it is to be, again, to discuss, and Lauren, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to spring to the board.
Absolutely.
One, one slide, one slide, I don't know if anyone. So the Pirates of the Caribbean, the Johnny Theft, talking about one journey ends and definitely another journey begins. And to the board, to Mr. Castelloni, when I went to him, and it's been three years, almost to the month now, that I went to Mr. Castelloni, and based on an observation, and if we could, next slide. I had spoken with Mr. Castelloni in the original presentation about regular healthcare for our students. Because as a school nurse, one of my observations was our students weren't seeking and getting some of just the routine, basic primary care that they needed. And that's impacting them educationally, and it's impacting the school, because students aren't in the seats. It had a number, a number of factors. So I went to Mr. Castelloni, took an executive summary proposal, and let me just share. I spent twenty-five years in one of the largest corporations in the world. And I rose through the technical leadership rooms. And I've seen leaders, and I've seen people in leadership position who couldn't find their way out of the paper bag. But Mr. Castelloni, when I made this proposal to him, talked about the benefits that he just identified. The benefits to the students, the benefits to the school, the benefits to the community at large. He balled in, just in low patience, he said, enough, I've heard enough. This is great, this is wonderful, let's go forward. So that's an example, in my opinion, in my experience, of true leadership. Not working within the boundaries, but let's push the boundaries a little bit for purpose and for meaning. And then he said, okay, Charlie, I'll give you free rankings, you got to bring this to the board and now convince the board. And I had the privilege of doing that two and a half years ago, coming to the board and saying, we have this wonderful proposal of a school-based health clinic, and what do we need to do with it, and what we can do with it, and the board embraced that. So, and it was unanimous. And how exciting was that for me? That I not only have a district superintendent that is a leader, that can think out the signs of proverbial box or find their way out of the paper bag, but the entire board embraced this idea and demonstrated again that this is a community of leadership, that they can be forward-thinking and set the example for Dutchess County. Because this is going to be the first school-based health clinic in Mid Hudson Valley, in the Harlem River area. And this is coming from Armenia. Then, to me, that is just absolutely phenomenal, phenomenal. I'm not surprised, don't get me wrong, I don't want to give a wrong impression here. But the size of Armenia, look at Arlington, look at Wappingshire's. We're talking three thousand, four thousand students. Do I dare say six hundred maybe tops in Armenia? And we're leading efforts in the forefront, and it might be healthcare-focused, but healthcare and education are inextricably linked. You can't separate the two, it's inextricable. So we, I just happen to be the person who brought the concept of Mr. Castelloni. Then we brought it to you, we had people like Mr. Ferrier come on board. This is an example of a community, albeit a team effort, just fabulous. I've gotten help from Lauren, Miss Tracy has been wonderful. I have been blessed to be a part of the Webita family, and I will continue to be, but just in a different world, and in a different, with a different organization. And with that, I'd like to just recognize Open Door and Miss Sarah Hodgson. Sarah, again, is a member of Open Door. So what does a school-based health clinic need? It needs a school, and it needs a health-based clinic. And Open Door is going to be our facility to provide us the healthcare portion of the clinic. And Miss Hodgson happens to be the director of school-based health. So I am so excited to have Sarah here, representing this wonderful organization, that when I was looking, when the board gave me the permission to go see a partner that Open Door opened up their arms and said, yes, let's, let's do this here in Armenia, and in Webita. Very exciting times.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry that the camera's right here for Zoom.
I'm sorry?
The camera's right here for Zoom, so when you back up, it's not seeing in the front of you.
I take your.
So if you could just stand to the side. If you want to stand to the side, I'm sorry.
Lauren, thank you for that statement, I'm really.
Sorry.
So anyway, with the students, I saw this with the students a week ago to the next slide. Lauren, so again, I just want to reemphasize, there's a number of, that's a matter, there's a number of school-based health clinics up north.
Yep.
Up north, there's sixty-seven, almost seventy percent of the school-based health clinics are in New York City proper. In this green area, we're going to be it. And there's opportunity with that, because you, Mr. Castelloni, Mr. Ferrier, this can be a model, we can judge it with our Open Door partner, to be again a model for the other districts that are going to say, wow, we need to do. to be again, a model for the other districts that are going to say, wow, we need to do this at our school. Because number one, it's about keeping the students healthy. Because remember, health and educational success are inextricably linked. And this is just some value. It's good for the kids, it's good for the school, it's good for the families, it's good for the district, uh, the community. So just one more, this is just some examples of some services. This is going to be primary care, care for the kids, for the students. There's going to be immunizations, there's going to be acute care, episodic care, chronic illness care, nutritional counseling, dentistry, vision, various screenings. This is great stuff that's going to positively affect our school.
How about the other day, the email we got yesterday or Friday regarding mental health?
Oh, Sarah, would you like?
Great, great news.
Yeah, great news. We, uh, we with our partner, Family Services, the Westchester, um, submitted a proposal that a month and a half ago to add a mental health provider to the school-based health center program here at Weepata. Just learned that we were onboarded for grant, so we're bringing in an additional mental health provider here.
I mean, that is, that is wonderful. Because one of the most chronic issues in student health is having access to mental health. And that's just not a Weepata issue, that's just not a Dutchess County issue or a New York issue. That's nationwide, there is a severe shortage of mental health care. We're going to have one here. And we've got a room dedicated for mental health. This is fabulous, oh, we know, this is, this is absolutely, absolutely fabulous. So all of this is going on. And then we found our healthcare partner and they say, oh, by the way, uh, we're on board, but we have to meet regulations for the Department of Health. We've got to have certain criteria in the layout, the physical footprint of the operation. What does that mean? That means building, construction, and remodeling. And of course, what does that require? Money, everything costs money, everything costs money. So we were fortunate enough that I spent a lot of time putting effort, a pen to paper. And I know my friend, Mr. Ferrier, did a lot of financial calculations, putting pen to paper. And we submitted contracts. And Nancy, I'd like to recognize Nancy Heaton of the Foundation for Community Health across the border. Nancy, uh, you're the CEO of Foundation for Community Health?
Correct.
And Foundations for Community Health graciously made a significant financial contribution to us along with Representative Dee Dee Barrett. And we were blessed, whether you're religious or not, I'm using that in a very generic way, so no one is offended. We were blessed to be rewarded with grant funding that allowed us to build a fabulous. So, thank you, Lauren, I've been speaking and you've been catching up. So we've got a roadmap that should anyone want to use us as a model, we can walk them through. As a matter of fact, I haven't shared this with you, Mr. Castelloni or the board. I've already been approached by two separate school districts. And I met with two separate individuals from school districts wanting my help to come to develop a presentation so they can go to their superintendent and get something like this rolling. Based on all the press, the positive, the significant positive press that we've received. They've reached out to me and I'm already engaging people that can use us as a role model. Again, with a focus for student, student health, physical health as well as mental health. So in conclusion, this is the journey, one journey ends, another one is beginning. I am so thrilled to be part of the Weepata family. I'm going to continue to be part of the Weepata family, just in a different capacity. I am tremendously privileged and honored to be associated with Open Door and the Foundations for Community Health, New York State, Dee Dee Barrett, helping us with the funding. It's been a privilege, so just one more, Lauren. Again, and that just summarizes, that summarizes the acknowledgements. And thank you for your time, I really appreciate being, having the opportunity to come up and share, uh, share this, share the story. If you haven't seen or walked through, it's not ready yet. I walk in there every day, the sun's come, it's beautiful, it's really beautiful. So thanks, thank you, I really appreciate it.
And was there any saving, was there saving or you're just here for?
I'm just here for emotional support, I suppose, and because I'm so excited. And we're, we've got the Department of Health coming in a couple of weeks, always very excited. And then, and we're really early on board, it's been a good strong orientation and temporary certification. I think on the community day, and I, I'm running my pickoff. We're very excited, Open Door is thrilled to be a part of the community.
I know school-based health centers is actually one of our exclusive things I'm very interested in seeing them along our strategic plan. So how great it is just perhaps a lot of companies saying, hey, here's a plan. I mean, we didn't have to like talk anybody into it, it's all very exciting, I think. I, I can't wait to see it spread.
It'll be a major difference, big, big change, changing from every time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castelloni. And of course, if you've got any questions, I've answered the questions, or can't answer the new questions.
I, I don't honestly have a question, I'm grateful to, I was there to, you know, we brought this to the board, so, most of us. I, I can't tell you how exciting it was there, I can tell you how exciting it is now. I'm grateful to everybody here, I know exactly how much work everyone here put in. Grateful to you being willing to come to another county and spread this. And I'm especially grateful to you because you didn't let a little bit of your state board stop you. You reached out to the local community and helped us, and this all means the world. It's all right, this is, this is a really big for our kids, thank you.
One problem, Charlie, I'm not going to be your boss.
Yeah, but Mr. Castelloni, you'll still be the man.
You can't have to pull pork.
I thought I was good at kissing up, but Charlie, yeah. But, uh, yeah, I just wanted to think about a couple of things, as I remember when you came in to do this presentation. And if I remember to a person on board in the room, we weren't just supported, we were excited, absolutely. And, uh, and so I want to compliment you for coming up with this idea, or discovering this idea and then thinking it through and, you know, thinking it's a possibility. Yes, I compliment, like, like, and bringing, you know, folks, and we also thank what you bring to people on board, including Mr. Castelloni and so on. So that's just compliments from you all, but I really appreciate it. Another practical question, of course. So if, not that that was impractical, but, but in terms of the functioning of the, of the clinic health and mental health, I think of this. Real there, how, how is this clinic utilized in, in a number of ways? But what made me think of it was mental health, so will all children be brought in, invited into, to be part of something? Or I assume it's not just waiting for a kid who says they have a problem with their condition to this. I think the more assertive appropriate.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
So part of, part of the outreach is really through Open Door, where they have the expertise in this area. We will, we wanted to do a soft opening sort of in May, so we can get the word out, there'll be mailings, there'll be outreach to the community. Uh, there'll be here at the community day, um, we'll be signing, but once we have consent, we'll be able to see those students, uh, right away. And really with the hope that through the summer, as they need physicals and things like that, Charlie will be already on board. We'll be able to, um, see those students, be fully functional, hit the ground running in September, so they're here as a partner. Uh, but in, above that, you know, there is a means that if, if a student comes in and they want to be seen, there is a, a means to get consent on the fly, so to speak. Uh, and because of Open Door's expertise in this and being in a number of other districts we've visited, uh, you know, they already have that model in place, we're not having to rebuild that. So, um, our hope is that we get as many students as possible in here, um, and participate. So it's not just, we can see, it will be a proactive sales, uh, you know, uh, approach, you know, kind of say, why, why is there the benefit to be a part of this and this is why.
And I guess I really, it's driven into the school experience, right, that's a normal thing to, you know, this is what we grew up with, kind of. So last thing, it's one of apologies that I won't have the opening ceremony, I have a commitment on that day, but, yeah, congratulations. I need to rethink.
Anybody else?
I think you and Rick summed it up very well. It was exciting two and a half years ago, but we've also done over the last two years about the mental health needs and the increase in that. So to add that is really just like a cherry on top.
Absolutely, and as a matter of fact, that was something that had always been in focus. And Open Door really did the additional necessary groundwork, including grant writing. So Sarah has been just the person at the stone, just pounding away to get the grant funding that's going to result in that individual being here. So that's, uh, I mean, that's going to be wonderful, wonderful for the students, absolutely.
I don't want to leave out the coordinators if you're on Zoom, I don't know how easy it is to get to them if anybody wants to say anything.
I think we're good. No, Charlie, thank you, Charlie.
Okay, that's it, Mark, Lauren. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, consent agenda, is there anything, any coordinators that want to put their? In that case, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? They're saying, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, sorry. There you are, yep. John, is your hand raised?
It was.
There it goes, Chris? There we go, all three. Back to the. I think I stopped duplication. Sorry, I see them on the screen, so it will be in the recording, yes. Sorry.
Okay, so we have, yeah, the next thing is, uh, number 901, a resignation. Uh, do you have a motion to accept the origination of Edward Cash? Thank you, uh, wish him well. All in favor? Aye. We need you to let us know if they all said aye also.
Yes.
Yes, they did?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, thanks. 902, teacher eight, resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
They have this community reports. I don't honestly think we have any community reports at this point. Policy, we're chugging along, the finance was, prevented the budget, I, I think so far we're good. Um, policy, second reading and adoption of policy 5460. Which, um, what, what was on, um, what's on the agenda is it contained everything except a couple of references.
I've changed that.
You did. Okay, so it's actually there, if everyone had a chance to look at it, it's just, we were just moving the new suggestions in. So they have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All three.
Thank you. And, yes, so we only have a code of conduct. Although I, there are a couple I would like us to look over, but I'm, I'm going to ignore the folks for now, something we can feel good for. We, we actually, I think, we just get another, another mailing, Tracy. We just get another mailing.
We did, I was going to send it out today.
So, yeah. That's okay, at least we're starting.
Almost there.
There we go. Okay, if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make a public comment, please, um, either unmute yourself or raise your hand or. Or type, yes, you can type it and someone can read it.
Anyone?
Not that I see.
Sorry, it's a little clunky, but we're, we're doing our best to try to let people still comment instead of just having a meeting and.
So again, any comments that you may, um, think of or not get through here, if you email or text us or call us or come to the office, whatever it may be, we will, uh, be sure to answer it for you.
We have many compliments for Charlie. And congratulations.
Just ask one more question. The, uh, the policy that we were setting, right, and so we had the language of periodically doing all that, do you have any thoughts of that? You know, my situation, I'm asking from the person's perspective, asking this to school, have you thought about it? I have to record that.
So we'll, uh, yeah, honestly, and again, this is just my opinion, the summer is a good time to look at things like that because we're not slammed with everything else that needs to be done. So I, again, hopefully we can set that aside and, and make the plan to go through any policies that we change that we need to perhaps set up new parameters for. So we'll, we'll try not to forget. Um, and at this point then, I guess it's time to enter executive session. We have a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations.
Second.
No, no, we're not, yes, there'll be no action taken after the executive session. So everyone is, can, can either sign off or we're going to be able to walk this off.
Thank you all for attending and, uh.
I, I should really say all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you all for attending, we say.
Thank you.
We are going to take a quick walk through the. The South County Center and.